Welcome to the February Business Meeting of the Rock Hill School District. It is my pleasure to introduce Luke Bracy, an eighth grader at Desmond Creek Middle School, to open our meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Barney, members of the board, Superintendent Pugh, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. I am Luke Bracy, an eighth grader at Desmond Creek Middle School. I am honored to represent Desmond Creek and bring the meetings from my principal, Mr. Moten, and the faculty and staff of Desmond Creek. Please stand with me and remain standing for the moment of silence coming in for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now you can remain seated. It is my experience, it is my pleasure to tell you about my experiences as a member of the Rock Hill, the Rock Hill High varsity basketball team, and also the, um, being the conference championship two times and being undefeated for my, for Desmond Creek football, going sixteen and oh both years. With Rock Hill High, it was a, it was definitely, you know, a changing, like a different, new experience for me, but it was also a good experience, and I'm glad I did it. And for Desmond Creek, playing with the football team, it was a lot of great kids and great coaches, and, um, we went undefeated, and it was just two great seasons of playing football. Thank you for inviting me to represent Desmond Creek.
Thank you, Luke. He's the student body president of Desmond Creek, and he's mentioned his football and then basketball. It's really unusual that we have someone start the meeting that really has two principals representing, because his, um, Desmond Creek Principal, Mr. Clayton Moten, is here, and the Rock Hill High Principal, Ozialo, is here, so it's unusual, you've got that much supervision.[166.37][166.37](Laughter). But, uh, his, his mom, Terry Bracy, grandmother and Bracy, uh, are joining him here tonight as his assistant principal for Desmond Creek. Have I opened it up to any questions or comments for board members? Hannah.
Hi.
Hi.
So pleased to see you here. I'm wondering though, how you could have played on Rock Hill High's varsity basketball team when you were just in the eighth grade at Desmond Creek?
Uh, yes ma'am, it just took a lot of hard work and effort, you know, in the gym every day, and just staying committed, and that's what it brought me to, and I continue to do that.
So you are still a student at Desmond Creek and playing with the varsity basketball team at Rock Hill?
Yes ma'am, but, um...
My goodness, man, I tell you, that's...
Thank you, thank you. It's just a hard drive, you know, from Desmond Creek to Rock Hill High after school, but it's...[231.45][231.45](Laughter).
Hey, uh, Jane.
This is probably a not very sensible question or stupid question, but what are your plans for the future?
Um, I plan, once I get into high school, I plan to, I attempt to get any Division One scholarships for college, like, uh, North Carolina, Kentucky, all the big, uh, Division One basketball schools. I continue to go for there, and my dream is to make it to the NBA, but always have a backup plan.
How long have you been playing?
Um, for about four or five years now.
Children.
Look, I remember meeting you at Desmond Creek. Are you still the, uh, president of the student council?
Yes ma'am.
Uh, now you're an eighth grader, and you're getting ready to leave pretty soon, because this semester's moving fast. What would you tell the principal of some improvement that you feel likely to be made?
Um, I think Desmond Creek's perfect. I think there's really no... Does that help you? All three years, it was, it was probably the best experience.
Wendy.
First, I gotta say, you look so nice.
Thank you.
Do you dress up for school every day?
Um, I follow the dress code.[317.83][317.83](Laughter).
And if we, if we didn't have the dress code with the, the polos, you would dress like that though, right?
Yes.[330.02][330.02](Laughter).
So now that you've gotten a little, little taste of being over at Rock Hill High, what are you, other than not having that long drive to, um, between schools, what are you most looking forward to in high school?
Um, I play basketball with a lot of different kids from different schools, and they're mostly going to Rock Hill High, and I wanna, it would be fun to play with all of them, instead of, you know, just a couple of people from Rock Hill High, and just being able to go to school with them and all my friends from different schools as well.
Wait.
So you just, a couple of weeks ago, picked out all your classes for high school. Was it a hard decision, or was it pretty easy for you to figure out what you wanted to do?
Um, it was pretty easy. It was a smooth process for me. It was...
Good, good.
Yes ma'am.
Alright, thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
The local news media has notified in writing of agenda on Sunday, February the twenty-fifth. I now entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Approved by Milner Douglas, seconded by Wendy Cole. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Before I turn it over to Dr. Pugh for recognitions, I'd like to recognize, we have a group of Winthrop students in the audience, uh, and it's not that they just love to come to board meetings, they're required to come to be to class, but I would expect they're all looking for teaching jobs, and it would, of all the students would stand up so any principals here can, can, can look at them, and maybe, uh, I don't know, some of them have jobs, some of them are looking, but they'll be, they'll be knocking on your door pretty soon. But thanks for coming.
I would like to ask, um, our former mayor of Rock Hill, I've not said that before, Doug Echols, to come forward. For nearly thirty years, including twenty as mayor of the city of Rock Hill, Doug Echols committed himself to public service. Mr. Echols has a long history and connection to Rock Hill Schools, beginning with his service to Northwestern High School from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen seventy-six as the school's first head football coach and director of athletics. For his foundational work at Northwestern, he was inducted into the Northwestern Athletic Hall of Fame in two thousand and eleven. Following Northwestern, he would go on to work in the Clover and Fort Mill School Districts, administering and developing curriculum projects with the South Carolina Department of Education. After serving in administrative positions within the Winthrop University Athletics, Athletics Department, Mr. Echols became the first commissioner of the South Atlantic Conference and NCAA Division Two Conference with headquarters in Rock Hill. During his term as mayor, Mr. Echols initiated Rock Hill's Commission for Children and Youth and the Mayor's Task Force for Greenways, Trails, and Sidewalks. As you can see throughout his career, Mr. Echols has remained committed to improving the city for all citizens and the school district as a direct beneficiary of his work. Tonight, we say thank you for your longstanding partnership within Rock Hill Schools. We wish you well in your retirement from public service. I do have to tell one story. When I was named superintendent, um, in Rock Hill, I came from a place where I had four mayors, um, in my countywide system, um, and I had accepted the position, and I had a message from Mayor Echols, um, as the new superintendent, and I knew when I moved here that things would be different, and you certainly have meant a lot to me and to our school district, so we appreciate you so very much, and he is not retired, he is now working part-time for McMillan, Pazdin, Smith, so he hasn't stopped, so we thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Echols is gonna make a comment, but I, I do wanna tell you what, um, what this says. It says, "Doug Echols, thank you for your service to the children and support of Rock Hill Schools while serving as mayor, given by Rock Hill School District on February the twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen." And before he speaks, I do wanna recognize Ms. Echols.
Please, please.
She's right there. Ms. Echols, come on up, because she is also such a supporter of the children of Rock Hill School District and of Mayor Echols.
Thank you so much, I'm, I'm very appreciative of this recognition, but I have to say how much I appreciate the opportunity to, to come to the Rock Hill School District in nineteen seventy-one. Mr. Sam Foster was the new principal at, at Northwestern, and he took a chance on a very young, uh, football coach. I was twenty-five years old at the time. I thought I knew everything and I knew nothing, uh, but, uh, we had, we had a great time and got that school started, uh, I think on the right, right footing, and certainly, Sam Foster, uh, bringing me to Rock Hill was one of the best things that ever happened, uh, in, in my life, and Sylvie and I have always felt like that public education is the cornerstone of democracy, and certainly, uh, as school board members and as members of the staff and future teachers, uh, I hope you will always remember that, that the work we do on a daily basis with young people, um, really creates that future for us that we all want to have going forward. I appreciate this recognition, and really thank you for the, Sylvie and I thank you for the opportunity to be associated with, uh, Rock Hill Schools, and we will continue to be associated whatever way we can to be helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I would like for Sergeant Michael Johnson of the Rock Hill Police Department, Mr. Kevin Rinn, if you'll come forward with him. We also, we're hoping that Sergeant Tim Lee of the Sheriff's Department could be with us tonight, but he is out sick. You know, it's, it's in times that there are things happening in our, our, um, country that make us really think about how important our local law enforcement are, but certainly, we appreciate you every single day for what you do, and, and we often say in the school district that the Rock Hill Police Department, the Sheriff's Department are extension of our school district. Um, we work together, um, a, a lot, so we thank you. Rock Hill Schools has a strong partnership with local law enforcement agencies, the Rock Hill Police Department, and the York County Sheriff's Office. Working collaboratively, Rock Hill Schools, staff, um, and, and law enforcement agencies, along with students and parents, strive to provide a safe and secure learning environment for our students. Tonight, we would like to say thank you to representatives from Rock Hill Police Department and the York County Sheriff's Office, and allow each organization, which it will really just be you, Sergeant Michael Johnson, um, to give us just an overview of, um, the SRO program and its importance. In the coming months, we will be inviting each of our school resource officers to share a personal story about his or her involvement with our schools, and most importantly, the relationship that they have, the positive relationship with our kids. So thank you, Sergeant Johnson, and we're gonna let you say your words.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh, and, uh, thank you to the school board. I really appreciate, uh, being invited here this evening. Uh, I've been with the Rock Hill Police Department now about thirteen years, the last three wo- year, uh, years of which I've been assigned, uh, to oversee the, uh, the Police Department's School Resource Officer Program, and I'm not exaggerating when I say those last three years of my law enforcement career have been the most rewarding, and just like Dr. Pugh said, it all comes down to relationships, and, uh, whether that's the relationships with the kids, or the relationship with the, uh, school staff and administration, and the relationship with the district office personnel, uh, that's what's allowed our program to be so successful, and, um, you know, I work every day with, uh, you know, Kevin Rinn, and, and I see a lot of other familiar faces out here that are constantly aggravating with problems and things like that, but, uh, but when you said, you know, seeing the, uh, SROs as a, an extension of the, of the, uh, the staff and everything, that's the truth. Uh, we've really been welcomed in, you know, whether it's at the school level or at the district level, and, uh, all of my officers, they say they definitely feel like part of the, uh, the Rock Hill School District family.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you very much. Earlier this month, the Rex Institute at Winthrop University recognized outstanding mentors from more than fifty professional development schools who partner with Winthrop University's Richard W. Riley College of Education. Two of the eight finalists for the two thousand and eighteen Jesse Williams Little Leading the Way Award for Outstanding Mentorship represent Rock Hill Schools. Tonight, we say thank you and congratulations to Rock Hill High School English teacher, Carol Weaver, and Evanport Elementary School third grade teacher, Mary Lou Hunt, on being named finalist for this award. We recognize effective mentoring is an essential part of the teaching tradition, and mentor teachers offer, offer vital support and guidance to new and future educators. To honor these special teachers for their efforts, Dr. John M. Little established the Jesse Williams Little Leading the Way Award in honor of his wife, a nineteen seventy-three Winthrop alumna. This statewide award is established as a partnership with the Littles, Winthrop University's Richard W. Riley College of Education, and the James and Susan Rex Institute for Educational Renewal and Partnership. Could Carol Weaver and Mary Lou Hunt please come forward? And they are supported tonight. Carol is here with her husband, I see him in the audience. Um, Mr. All is in the audience. Mary Lou is here with, um, her principal and maybe some family as well, so congratulations, we're proud of you. Congratulations, and then if y'all wanna go over and shake Mr. Hutchinson's hand, and then we'll probably get a picture. Straight Heron. We missed you the last time, so we thought we'd do it a second time. You have to stand on the other side, and I know that Dr. Leonard is in the audience very proud, um, so it isn't the, I can't speak tonight. The athletic director, Lance Roberts, thank you for being here. South Point Straight Heron was named the U.S. Army National Coach of the Year earlier this year while attending the Army All-American Awards Ceremony in San Antonio, Texas. Heron led South Point to the school's sixth state title and fifth in his seven years at the program's helm. The Stallions won all fifteen games they played, beating powerhouse programs from North Carolina and Georgia. Heron served as the East Team's Defensive Coordinator for the Army All-American Game. Congratulations, Coach Heron.
We have no citizen participation tonight. Next up is Consent Action Agenda, which includes minutes from the January eighth work session, the January twenty-second business meeting, and the January twenty-sixth call executive session, approval of personnel recommendations, and approval of activity bus run or requests from the Rock Hill YMCA for day camp trips. I now entertain a motion to approve, uh, moved by Terry Hutchinson, seconded by Helena Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Next up is Action Agenda Items. First up is, uh, Approval of Language Immersion Naming Recommendation, that'd be the Cherry Park Elementary School of Language Immersion, and I would ask Mr. Cox to give a presentation before we, uh, take the motion on the floor.
Good evening Chairman Vining, Superintendent Pugh, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be talking while we're actually firing things up here a little bit, because I'm gonna be asking, uh, Ms. Susan Dixon, who is the leader of the Language Immersion Naming Committee, uh, to come and, um, give the presentation. This is similar to the one which she gave along with her team at the work session a couple of weeks ago. We put together, per our policy, um, a very strong team, which she'll tell you about, and they went through a fairly comprehensive process, which she'll also recap for you tonight, and very excited to be able to reveal, um, for a vote, the name of our newest school, which, um, to paraphrase, um, our postal brethren, um, is being constructed, um, with neither rain nor snow nor sleet holding it back, so we're still under construction with it, but we wanted to bring the name for you tonight, so, Ms. Dixon.
And I'm not sure how many committee members are here tonight, um, but we had a committee of various people, community members and parents, um, immersion parents, and the Teachers of the Year from Richmond Drive, Rosewood, and Evanport. I, I will just go ahead and say that we, um, started out with thirty-nine names that we brainstormed originally, and we had to get that under, into a manageable, a number of names, and so we decided to divide the name into actually two names, whatever the elementary school is going to be, and then the definition of it, which is now, um, School of Language Immersion. We sent a survey out to, um, not only family members, but also teachers, and I think twelve-hundred emails were sent with the survey, and we received, I'm, I'm going to guess that there's four hundred and seventy-five responses, or four hundred and sixty-five responses, which was a strong response. Um, we did have three names that they could rank on the survey, and they did that, but there was also a question where they could, um, suggest other names that were not on the survey, and they did that, and we came up with twenty-one additional names to talk about in addition to the three that we had narrowed it down to. We even brought some names back on our list that were previously taken off. So, um, there you go, four hundred and sixty-five, not four hundred and seventy-five, so I was close. Still a strong response. The survey results, I've already done that one, so... So, um, we were going to bring it down to three names when we, um, we discussed those twenty-one, plus the ones we had already had before, and instead, we narrowed it down to four names, because there were, um, one was definitely in the lead, and then three were very close. These were the four names that made the finalist list, and they're just in alphabetical order. Cherry Park Elementary School of Language Immersion, Eden Terrace Elementary School of Language Immersion, Friendship Elementary School of Language Immersion, and Rock Hill Elementary School of Language Immersion. And this, when we finished ranking, discussing, and voting, this was the, um, name that came out above all the others, Cherry Park Elementary School of Language Immersion, so that is our recommendation.
Alright, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the naming of the school as the Cherry Park Elementary School of Language Immersion.
Second.
Approved by Jane Sharp, seconded by Terry Hutchinson. Any discussion? Ms. Miller.
Just a comment and back to the committee, thank you for all the hard work. I know that this has taken a lot of effort and time out of people's schedules, and I really truly appreciate it, and I'm super excited about this thing, I think it's gonna be great.
You're welcome.
Yeah, good comments, uh, for the whole board, Helena. I mean, that's, you, you almost got pained just talking about all the names and feedback on, so I, I, I can feel your frustration, and we really appreciate the effort. Any other discussion?
I, I think it's a perfect name to recognize, both its occasion and its purpose, so you guys did a very good job.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Alright. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. We now have a newly named school as soon as we can get it opened up.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to all of the, any committee members who, who may be here or watching. Next up, we have a group of second read policies. After a policy's been approved twice, it becomes the, the policy of the district. It was first discussed at the work session in January, then the business meeting in Jan- January was first spoken, discussed at the work session in February, and then it's up for the second read. Uh, email was sent out to staff for comments, and we didn't get any feedback on these policies. And what I'll do is, I'll read the policies, if anybody wants to take one out, uh, and discuss separately, we will, if not, we'll take, uh, these as one vote. First one is Policy GCI, Professional Staff Development. Next one is Policy GDF, Support Staff Hiring. Next one is Policy GCE and GCF, and Administrative Rules, Professional Staff Recruitment and Hiring. And because the information held in, in these three policies is, is found in other policies, these are, are up for deletion, that's Policy GCE and Administrative Rule, Professional Staff Recruitment, Policy GCF and Administrative Rule, Professional Staff Hiring, and Policy GBEBDA, Criminal Record Checks. And I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move, a second.
Moved by Milner Douglas, seconded by Anne Reed. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Those are now district policies. Uh, next up, we have two policies, we'll take them one more time. First one is Policy KHE, Political Solicitations in Schools. I entertain a motion to approve, moved by Terry Hutchinson.
A second.
Seconded by Milner Douglas. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. It now is an approved policy. Next up, we have Policy GBI, Staff Participation in Political Activities. It's up for second read. I entertain a motion to approve. Jane Sharp is moved. Seconded by Helena Miller. Any discussion? And I, I will point out that the same timeline on, on these two policies for second read was the same as the G, so I didn't go through the whole process again. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, we have, um, policies for first read. They were brought up at the work session in February, and then tonight for the first read. Email was sent out asking for feedback after the work session. We have gotten some, and, and I will, will stop at those and discuss that. First one is, uh, if any of these policies somebody wants to take out, if you'll let me know. Has Policy GCA, Professional Staff Positions? Policy GCMD, Instructional Staff Extra Duties? Policy GCNA, Supervision of Instructional Staff? Policy GCRD, Tutoring for Pay?
There was a question, and I wondered what the response was.
This is all, the one I just read. Tutoring for Pay?
There was an innocent, there was a comment, one of the persons was coming on tutoring for pay and secretly paying, and I wonder if what responses was, was given, except we're gonna...
Well, I'm getting ready to, to state the comments, is, uh, we got a comment, says, "Because a teacher cannot tutor a student who she, she or he has any type of responsibility for, it would seem to make sense that there should be no paid tutoring going on in the schools. Should be noted, however, that it would be so much easier for parents to find tutors and for the tutors to have a..." and for the tutors to have a safe place to tutor a student if parents could bring the student to the teacher's school. As it is now, tutors have to meet in the student's home or at the library or some other public place, and none of these places are as secure as a teacher's school." So, I would like to make one other, and the comment was, they liked the school, but now in the previous version, it referenced a code of law that had to do with making money on school grounds, and I'm not sure that, is that in the new version as well?
That code is not in the new version.
And is it no longer code of law?
Is my understanding it is not, but I will get that clarified.
Because it's in the old one, and I would think that would explain why we couldn't allow it to happen, but it would be good to know that. This is all, I'd also like to make one other suggestion about tutors. When I taught in a different school district, there was one teacher in the district who was responsible for compiling a list of teachers who would be willing to tutor and what they could tutor. That way, whenever a parent needed to tutor for his or her child, all the teacher had to do was contact this person, and they could give the teacher phone numbers for possible tutors. In Rock Hill, often parents did not even know who to ask about tutors, and because teachers often do not know teachers at other levels of education or even possibly other schools, we do not have a way to offer any suggestions. Whenever I contacted the district specialist for my discipline, she too did not know who I could contact. It would not necessarily have to be a paid position, although that never hurts. I would be more than happy to do this simply by creating a short survey to send out to teachers. Anyway, I think the suggestion is, it would be nice, since a lot of parents are looking for tutors, if there was some way we could communicate information for tutors and for parents. That's my interpretation.
I thought that was a good suggestion, even though maybe pretty onerous for one teacher to handle bringing this district our size, but I just wondered if the administration did respond to this, or were they anonymous?
They were not anonymous. Dr. Sharp, good afternoon. Good evening, Mr. Vining, Doctor Q, ladies and gentlemen of the board. We did respond to that individual, and what we've let her know is that we've passed her suggestion on to the executive directors of elementary and secondary ed to come up and talk to the principals about a system that we can put in place for the district for parents to know who to contact for tutoring names.
Is there a prohibition in state law on tutoring at the school?
The legal reference did not come over from the current policy to the new one, so that reference is no longer there. But I will clarify and put something in your packet.
But this still would not make it possible for a teacher to tutor a student that they're currently teaching, correct?
A teacher should not tutor any student they are currently, they are teaching for pay, for pay.
For pay. I understand the question. They would tutor, but they cannot charge if they're teaching the student.
Yeah.
Is there a difference?
This is for first read, but it was a good suggestion, because parents are always looking for tutors, and that should be in policy somewhere. So, I think that's, I'd like the administration to look at that, and then we'll have a discussion on that aspect of the policy at the March work session, because that seemed like a good idea. Now, in terms of, the schools are a safe spot for tutoring, and it is a gray area, and I'm sure there are some legal issues, and I wish we would at least research the legal issues about allowing, what I'm assuming to be teachers that would charge for tutoring of their non-students, and see what the legal is, and we could discuss that in March as well. But it's okay, everybody leave this in with the group, knowing that we'll have more discussion than...
Yes.
Okay. Next up is Policy GDA, Support Staff Positions. Next up is Policy GDO, Evaluation of Support Staff. Next is Policy GCCA, and Administrative Rule, Sick Leave Bank. And then we had another comment about Sick Leave Bank. It says, "I didn't realize that a Sick Leave Bank couldn't kick in until twenty unpaid days have elapsed. I could see that as a financial disaster as that as a month's pay. A lot of us are paying for our kids' college, and they'll have several months' pay saved up, and new teachers are starting with thousands of dollars in school loan debt. Our recommendation would be to exhaust employees' days, annual and sick, then have the sick bank kick in. I know this would withdraw the days from the bank at a faster rate, but this could be compensated for by asking members to donate two days per year." Now, I may be wrong. I didn't see a change in the sick, in that part of the sick bank...
That part remained the same in the current version and the suggested version.
So, but now, there is a slight wording difference, but also with this suggestion, would you send this to the Sick Bank Committee to see if they want to address that?
I reached out to that employee. It's just a misunderstanding of how it works. Once an employee has used twenty days, if they have twenty days of sick leave days or annual leave days, they are paid for those days. So, those twenty days are not unpaid days. So, he is correct. You can use your sick time for those twenty days. And if an employee has fifteen days, and they're trying to reach that twenty, and there's five unpaid days, once the Sick Leave Bank grants them sick leave days, those five days are picked up and they are paid for those five days.
But you have made no contact with the Sick Bank Committee?
You cannot make contact until that, after that twentieth day.
No. The change, the change in the policy or this suggestion, you have not sent that to the Sick Bank Committee?
Yes, the Sick Bank Committee reviewed this.
They have to read both. Okay.
And she did reach out to the employee, because that was not incorrect. That was not correct information. His question is not, they don't have to wait twenty days and not get paid if they've got the days.
If they have the days, but if you're a first year, let's just say you're a first year teacher, you have, how many sick days?
Twelve.
Twelve? Then you would be, and you had something happen, you would go without pay for eight days.
For that pay period, but then once you're granted the Sick Leave Days, you'll get those days back.
You'll get, you won't get the date back?
Yes, you would.
So, how do you get the date back?
Payroll works it out and gives it to them in their next check.
But I will say that, you know, what Mr. Vining is saying is correct. This would hurt our new hired teachers more than anything, because those are the ones that are, have the lowest income, the highest student loans, and the ones that are probably living paycheck to paycheck if we're going to be real. So, losing, even if it is eight days worth of pay, may put a severe financial burden on fresh-out-of-college hired teachers. So, I'm wondering if there can be some kind of, I don't know, proviso or something put in to protect our brand-new-out-of-college new hires. If we're going to attract employees, employees in a district to our district, especially given the teacher shortage, maybe this is something we need to look into in order to make our offers more lucrative for fresh teachers out of college. Just throw it out there.
Really?
And we have to keep in mind, too, is that if a teacher doesn't join the bank, it's an option as to whether you join or not.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, you don't have to join.
It is optional.
What percentage have joined?
We do have at least eighty-five percent of our employees that are members of the Sick Leave Bank.
Okay.
And every year in October, employees have an option to join. So, if you didn't join your first or second year, and you learned at the Sick Leave Bank, or usually what happens is someone in your building takes advantage of it because of an unfortunate, you can't take advantage probably, but they have to use the Sick Leave Bank, and so the next year, that person that didn't join will remember what that other employee was able to benefit from and join the bank.
Wendy?
About how many teachers or employees use the Sick Leave Bank each year?
So far this year, we've had two employees that had to exercise the Sick Leave Bank.
And it is for catastrophic...
It is for catastrophic events, correct.
But if it's that low of a number, given how many teachers we have, I would like to see at least if it would be possible to put in a proviso for our new hires, fresh-out-of-college teachers, just because I know that this is, could potentially be extremely catastrophic if you had a first-year teacher that ended up in this position.
The number of days, the twenty days, is a threshold for the number of days you have to be out. An employee can be out ten days without any medical documentation. So, the twentieth day you're out consecutively is a significant number of days to be out, so that twenty days is why that, is why that is there. But we can go back to the board and discuss if we need to adjust or your suggestion to look at first-year teachers.
Any other comments? Mildred, then.
Since I've been in the Sick Leave Bank, I know, and experienced, and we have to keep in mind, too, that you use your leave first, that you have accumulated, and then if you join the Sick Bank, you have the time to join, and then you can pull from the Sick Bank.
That's correct.
But you use yours first, and I realize some of the new teachers probably won't have any, but still.
Wendy?
But like she did say, those new teachers, they will get back the days, so they'll miss it on one paycheck, but they're going to make up for it, so they will get paid for it.
Yeah, I do realize that. I also know that there are teachers, specifically first-year teachers, that five, six days before their paycheck is due, their checking accounts are close to zero because of student loans and because of living costs and being fresh out of college and trying to establish a new home for themselves and possibly a new town. So, yes, when you've been established for a while, you can make up reserves, but if it's your first-year teaching, you may not have that much. You know, I know teachers that are first-year teachers that may, you know, be making sure that they have nothing gas to get to school in the morning, much less have an extra three, four hundred dollars in their bank account to fund them for a couple of weeks. So, that was my little suggestion. I was, you know, knowing that recruitment and trying to get new people is our top agenda, it might be something nice to kind of sweeten the pot a little bit, so.
Any other comments? You might disagree with leaving it in with the others for first read. Next up is Policy GDJ, Support Staff Assignments and Transfers. Next is Policy GCQA and GCB, Professional Staff Reduction in Force. Next up is Policy GDR, Non-School Employment of Support Staff. I entertain a motion to approve these G policies for first read. It's all moved by Terry Hutchinson.
Second.
Seconded by Anne Reed. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven-zero for first read. Next up, we have a request for the administration to forgive a missed day due to bad weather. Well, I'll just read this. "All school districts designate annual at least three days within their school calendars to be used as make-up days in the event of weather or whatever occurrences. If those designated days have been used or are no longer available, the local school board of trustees may lengthen the hours of the school operation by no more, by no less than one hour per day for a total number of hours missed. They may operate schools on Saturday or may waive up to three days. A waiver granted by the local board of trustees of the requirement for making up up to three or fewer days missed may only be authorized by a majority of vote of the local school board, and after the completion of the 2014-15 school year, may not be granted for a school in the district until the school has made up three full days or the equivalent number of hours missed due to snow, extreme weather, or other disruptions requiring the school to close during the same school year in which the waiver is sought. We missed Monday, September 11th due to Hurricane Irma. We missed Wednesday, January 17th due to ice and snow conditions, and Thursday, January 18th due to ice and snow. We also missed Friday, January 19th. We have made up the days, and we have a fourth day, which would be for Friday, January 19th, which the administration is asking by majority of vote of the board forgive, is forgive that, is that the right?
Yes, we're asking for you to forgive that day.
That make-up day. And the options for that day would be going on a Saturday or adding another hour to the, to the day, to the hours that are made up, or adding a day at the end of the year, and none of those options appear favorable to the parents or staff. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve forgiving one increment weather. Mildred Douglas?
A second.
And Wendy touched on it. Yeah, comments, Jane?
All right. I know I'm out on a limb. It's not an unfamiliar position for me, but every time I think and I realize how short the school day is, I would, you know, I could tell you how long it takes to walk from one point to the other. That can be used for, it's just, our children are so precious, and we have so many kids who are so far behind already. There are so many other options that I don't know how seriously we considered it. Yes, in giving it for parents, but losing, losing learning time for our kids is absolutely crucial, so I will not be voting for it.
Elena?
I disagree.
I know you disagree.
No, that's fine. I still like you, Jane. I look at it from a couple of different aspects. The first one has to do with scheduling around the life of having multiple children in a household, and also taking into account that we have many teachers that are also parents. It would be extremely difficult to rearrange a family schedule that may have to do with work and may have to do with extracurricular activities and other things if you would extend the school day or change anything along the lines of what was suggested. The other thing has to do with business owners in town. If we would do this, you know, more than likely, especially if the suggestion would be Saturday school, people and students have jobs that would be impacted, and I don't think it's fair. I think that, you know, we cannot control weather. We have been given the autonomy to forget these days, and I think we need to exercise it and just cross our fingers and pray that we don't have any more of them.
One more comment. I speak for the other end of the spectrum, and the students who would be in school if we ran the buses, and the students who would benefit from the extra time.
Anybody else? I will say, Jane's, the last time this came, something similar came up, I voted just the way Jane did, but times have drastically changed since that time. I do think we weigh, we put way too much importance on the hours needed, and I have regretted some of the moves where, particularly the elementary school, we don't seem to have as much free time for kids as we used to have, which I think is important for the development of the child, and so I hope that the fact that the district is recognizing that and by asking for this forgiveness, so I'm going to support it.
And a quick comment. The length of the school day does not directly correlate to student learning or student achievement. If you look at some of the most successful countries in education around the world, their school days are actually shorter than ours, especially on the lower elementary level. Take a look at Finland, for instance, that has one of the highest rates of school systems. They also have a lot more free time or playtime or whatever, you know, the terminology that you want to use, kind of like what Mr. Vining was hinting at, built into their curriculum. So, I don't necessarily think that keeping them there longer is going to achieve anything more.
You also have, we're talking about countries with much stronger economic supports for their families, too, in terms of daycare...
Absolutely, yes.
...and other kinds of services that the U.S. doesn't always provide.
No, no, that is true, too, but...
Any other comments? Heard all those in favor, raise your hand. Who's opposed? Motion carries six-one, with Sharp against. Next up is Board Retreat Date. Our policy says that we have to have to do a board self-evaluation every year, and we just need the board approval to set the retreat date for April 16th, 2018, from eight-thirty to two, in the district office located on Black Street. I'm not sure what the street address is, but it's on Black Street. I entertain a motion to approve that date. Terry Hutchinson has moved. Seconded by Anne Reed. Discussion?
I just had a question. Did we ever get any information on who we were going to use as a facilitator?
But you know who from the school board? But you know who from the school board? Same one as last year, the School Board Association. Any other questions, discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Concludes our action items. We are no communications tonight. And next up is reported superintendent.
The school board will next meet on Monday, March the twelfth, two thousand eighteen, when it holds a data session and work session. As it stands, our final meeting at Rawlinson Road Middle School will be on Monday, March the twenty sixth. We will look forward to opening our new central office on Monday, April the ninth and hosting a board work session on that same evening. As we transition to our new location, meetings will continue to be streamed on our website and on Facebook as well as being made available for on-demand viewing immediately following each broadcast. We look forward to hosting community visits this Friday, March the second, at Leslie Elementary School and Castle Heights Middle School, where visitors will have an opportunity to tour each school, talk with students and hear from school administrators about programs and services available for students. We will begin at Leslie at eight thirty a.m. and then move to Castle Heights at ten fifteen. Visitors are invited to join us for lunch at Castle Heights following the school tour. For years, we have visited schools and districts as a member of the League of Innovative Schools and it is with great excitement that we announce more than one hundred superintendents and district leaders from across the country will be in our area on April twenty sixth and twenty seventh to visit Rock Hill Schools. We look forward to this tremendous opportunity to showcase the incredible work happening in our schools. The Build on the Rock website has been updated with photos. You are encouraged to visit the district's capital building program, Build on the Rock. The website is www.rock-hill.k12.sc.us/BuildOnTheRock for more information. This website provides status updates on active and planned construction projects in the district. On the page, viewers can see project descriptions, before and after photographs, and construction timelines. And that ends tonight's announcements.
Next up is a report on the February twelfth work session held at Rock Hill Middle School. We toured the new monitor school prior to the data session. We held a monthly data session. We received a tax increment finance update. We heard a presentation from the Rocky Ohio School Improvement Council. Received a naming recommendation for the Language Immersion School. We received an activity bus run request from the YMCA. We discussed policies KHE and GBI. We discussed section G policies, two sets for first read and second read. Received a request for the waiver of one snow day. We received an update on a pilot student drug testing program. We discussed the board's self-evaluation retreat. We discussed other future business and we held an executive session for contractual matter, construction update, and personnel matters. Other business, there's the two days of the Capitol sponsored by the School Board Association. Helena Miller is going. Is anybody else going to that?
I'm not sure yet.
Be sure you contact Ms. Gavins. We had a group of school board members attend the Psycholos School Board Association conference this past weekend. Does anybody that went like wish to give a report?
I mean, just some quick comments.
All right.
I think that we had an opportunity amongst ourselves to attend a lot of different sessions, some topics, some very relevant to us and some maybe not so much to our district. I think that we split up a little bit so that we would get the most bang for our buck, so to speak, so that we wouldn't all be in the same session. For the most part, it was very good. I will say that it was very impressive to actually hear our own associate superintendent, Leanne Kokolas, hold the presentation on the importance of SICs and kind of telling the story of what has happened at Rock Hill in our school district, especially with the Equity Committee and their work between the three high schools as well as, I believe we have had three winners of the Riley Award, which is kind of the biggest thing that can happen to an SIC. So that was very nice and Jim Mining helped doing part of that presentation too. And it seemed to be very, very well received from all the people who were in there. There were a lot of good questions. So that was a little proud moment. It was nice.
I'd just like to add one comment and that is, I enjoyed the session on attitude. Gave me an opportunity to think about myself and how my day can continue based upon the attitude that I began with. We would move forward. So I've been working and practicing on that.
May I add something? I too was very impressed with all of the activities that I had a chance to participate in. And I would like to add my comments to, I mean, to Helena's as it related to Jim Vining and Dr. Kokolas's report. It was very good. They represented us well, not just because of who they are, but because of the presentation itself and it was well received by a room full of people. I was also impressed with the student performances that were given at the beginning of the day. And I'm pleased that our students have had a chance to go and participate in one of those, not this series, but in several of the past conferences that I've had a chance to participate in. I'm hoping that the information that was given us, we can share it with our board members as we act on things that are given. And I'm hoping that as we act, that it will be a representative, a representative of not just the things that we think are correct and best to do, but I'm also hopeful that the things that we are representing of our school districts throughout South Carolina. I was especially impressed with Green Bull's presentation as it was one of those that I had a chance to look at, to view and to check out with some intense attention. I was very pleased that I had a chance to be there. And finally, I had a chance to socialize with the rest of our board members in a setting that was not the usual one here at Rock Hill and here at the school and meeting like we are attending tonight, but in a, at another kind of setting. Some of the people that we had a chance to interact with are people that we have had a chance to do business with from one place to another. But I'm so glad that we had a chance to experience not just the academic part of this conference, but also the socializing part. Because when you look down at the relationships that you have built throughout your life, those relationships are strengthened when you have a chance to talk and to chat and to share things with someone at a session that is not so formal. And I appreciate the chance to have gone. So thank you.
Spending time with the board members from throughout our state and discussing the issues that we have and what we have going on in our school districts just makes me so proud and blessed to be from Rock Hill School District and to see how far we are ahead of the curve in so many areas with everything that we do. One session was on board policies and school district was talking about how their policies hadn't been updated in twenty years. So we've got lots of great things going on. Another board was talking about how their bond referendum had just failed and they didn't know what they were going to do. So we have a great community and a great district, great teachers, and we're very blessed.
I like what Wendy just said is, when you get down there, you realize what a great community we have. All the districts in York County have tremendous support from the public. And lots of times, it takes going down there to realize how lucky we are and how appreciative we should be of the support we have in the community. Because everywhere in South Carolina is not, doesn't have the same support. In fact, one of the questions at the SIC meeting was, can SICs be used to support a bond referendum? And one of the board members said, can they be used to oppose a bond referendum? So can you imagine being in a district where the Good Improvement Council wants to go against your bond referendum? And so times like that, you just thank your lucky stars that we have the community that we do have.
Can I just add one thing? Those of you who would like to, you can go to the website for the School Board Association and be able to pull up everything for the conference for two thousand eighteen and be able to read some of the notes and everything.
Very good point. Also, this.
One last comment. We had one person who had served twenty years and has been receiving the service award for twenty years of experience. And that's our board chair, Mr. Jim Vining.
And as such, his name was listed in the program that was given out to everybody, which he wouldn't say himself, but he can do it right here.
On other business, the School Board Association wants us to poll our legislators on two issues. The one is, do they support changing the, to where the school calendar will start no earlier than the second Monday? Now it says the third Monday. So they'd like a yes or no, would you be for it or against it for legislators? And also, the other question, I want some of y'all to volunteer to contact certain ones. And also, the second question is, would you support a motion to where the local school districts can set their own start time? Start date, yeah, start date. And so those are the two questions. And the reason is because if it gets voted down this time, it cannot come back up. And the School Board Association does not want it brought up if there's not reasonable chance of passing. Now, they had given us every legislator in our delegation, but some of them have actually no business. So I would suggest that we get input from John King, Bruce Bryant, Gary Semerle, Mike Fanning, and Wes Clower.
I volunteer to contact them if you want me to, or I can take some of them. I'll be glad to help. I'm happy to help.
All right, I got two volunteers. All right. I'll get with you after the meeting. John King, Bruce Bryant, Gary Semerle, Mike Fanning, and Wes Clower.
And what's the due date? When do they want to want the bond?
March first.
Okay.
The next bit of business is the Come See Me Committee always picks community volunteers. And this year, they have picked one of our board members to be recognized as a community volunteer. And that community member is Helena Miller. And so congratulations, Ms. Miller. I knew you were busy. I wasn't till I read the list that I knew exactly how busy you were.
This is good.
She doesn't sleep. I know that. She used to send emails at three in the morning or at night. I guess when you're that busy, you don't have time to sleep. But thanks for your service. The last thing I had got, does any board members have any issues to be discussed by the board in the coming months? Wendy.
I would like more information on what we are doing for the social and emotional health of the students in our schools. I know we've got counselors in all of our schools, but like our high school counselors, they can barely keep up with trying to manage each student's schedule and make sure that they graduate. I know we've got some psychologists that come in to the schools and even some social workers that come in, you know, I'd like to know what we have, what we should be thinking about of doing more. Because I personally know so many students that gone through so many issues, anorexia and depression. What can we do for our students? What are we doing in the classrooms to make them realize that these things should not be a stigma, that they need, it's okay to ask for help?
I'd like to ask if we would talk about, do something to consider having SRO offices in elementary schools.
All right.
I don't know if this is something that we should bring up at a work session or if it's information that we can just put in hotline. But I would like to get some preliminary information about how our job recruitment is going so far. I know that we have had a large social media presence and I've seen a lot of advertisement. And I know that we've had a couple of job fairs and I think that there are some more coming up. I would just kind of get a feel for how is it looking? Because, you know, as we were down at the conference and we've heard it time and time again of, you know, we have a teacher shortage. How is this going to affect our district? How's this going to affect, you know, filling vacancies for the fall? And I know that we have, you know, true, natural causes such as retirement and things like that. Positions open and how are we doing on filling those? Is it looking good, bad?
I have a great follow-up question. It's because it's how we're sort of winter students. Somebody missed their job fair. If somebody missed a job fair, how do they get back in touch with the district now? What should they be doing to make up for that?
If you missed our job fair on Saturdays, when we conclude this meeting, I will meet you in the back corner. The other thing you can do is contact our office and get in touch with our district recruiter. Her name is Dr. Sylvia Berry. That telephone number is eight zero three nine eight one one zero two four. But I will meet you in that back corner when this meeting is adjourned.
Anybody else? I have an announcement. I will not be seeking reelection this November. And the reason I'm announcing this early is because I think it's important for people to consider the position. And I want people to have plenty of time to ask questions, find out what's involved. I want them to ask individual board members what's involved. I want them to learn, you know. The biggest surprise to me when I went to school board training was that you only have two jobs as a board member. And when you run through the election process, you don't realize there's only two. And so you hire the superintendent and you make policy to guide the superintendent in running the school district. The superintendent runs the district, not the board. But a lot of people don't understand it, including a lot of people running for board and a lot of people who get elected to board, don't realize that. And even we have hard times distinguishing what really is a board role and administrator role. So I'd like to help facilitate that discussion. People can contact me. I'd be glad to talk to them about what's involved. And what I always tell everybody is, they do not have to run, but they need to recruit someone. Because everybody knows someone that would make a good board member. And sometimes it just takes a little push from a group of people to convince that person to run. And so there's plenty of time. I'm expecting to see a lot of qualified candidates, good candidates, running because everybody has plenty of time to go out and recruit. Right, Jane?
All right. I want to join with Jim, except being more wordy than Jim. I have a couple of more things to say. When I retired after 20 years as an elementary school principal, I had absolutely no idea of any further involvement in education. However, it happened, it happened, and I'm coming to the end of eight years serving on the school board. It's been very challenging and very enjoyable, working with so many people whose only job is to make sure our children are learning. I used to tell my teachers and the four schools I was principal over the years that they should stand tall, because they have the most important job in our country, that are producing the next generation of citizens. And I still believe that is true. I, I, I also, and I'll be running again, as, as I said, I meant to say when I started, when I retired after 20 years, I was already several years over the usual retirement age. So I, I think it's time. But I do, like Jim, I, I wanted to encourage anybody out there, anybody in this room who, who shares my vision of the overwhelming importance of public education, then, then I would love to talk to you, and both of us can, can be contacted, if you don't know our contacts, through the district board information on the sheet. So, um, it's been a wonderful time, and we're not through yet, we still have quite a few more months, so.
All right, uh, next up, we have an executive session. Do you want to do personnel first?
Please.
Personnel matters, contractual and hiring, and then a construction update. I'll entertain a motion to leave open session and enter executive session.
Second.
Jane Sharp has made the motion, Helena Miller has some discussion. We will take a ten-minute break. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero.